All right, if you need me for anything, just holler. Thanks.
Good morning, everybody. Sorry for the delay. A little unexpected congestion outside. Difficulty getting here this morning. I'll go ahead and call this meeting, the special meeting of the Placerville City Council, Tuesday, November 12th to order. May I ask everybody to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome again. Could I, who's an active city clerk?
I will.
I don't know, we've got an attorney here, we think. All right, Mr. Morris, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor is absent due to a conflict because she sits on our cannabis committee, so she was not able to rule on this. And Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you, Cleve. Move on to adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion for adoption?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. Public comment? This is a portion of the meeting that any member of the public that wishes to address the council on an item that is not on our special agenda this morning, it would be a time to approach the podium and address the council. We ask that you limit those comments to three minutes and matters that are pertinent to city council business. Seeing no one approaching the podium? Is there any written?
They're confused, I think.
Public comment on this or?
No, on anything that's not on this morning's agenda.
You can go ahead and start.
So if you're here to talk about the appeal?
No, you need to publicly comment on the appeal.
No, you would wait till we get to that part of the meeting.
This is for items, Jeremy, that are not on our agenda. They'll be able to speak to your appeal later.
It's fine.
No.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, there'll be another time we'll allow the public to speak to your appeal. But this is for any other item not related to your appeal. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you. Mr. Morris, was there any written communication received by the council this morning?
There's one document you have here that was submitted by.
One document submitted this morning. This is in relation to the appeal this morning, so.
All right, and the council has that letter, so, all right, thank you. All right, there being no other comments, we'll move on to item number, you would think it would be four, but you never know. 4.1, the discussion and information item, consider the appeal of Reserve House not advancing from Phase 2 to Phase 3 for cannabis dispensary permit. Mr. Morris, could we have your staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The city has been reviewing the applications for quite some time now. Applications were due on April 29th, so that's when the process started. We received 13 applications, and as you know, the council has authorized up to three by ordinance that could be approved in the city. We went through the process, through, the first phase was the smittle, and then the second phase was the review of the applications. During that review, that was done by HDL, there were five applicants who did not reach the required 80 percent of the points. Of those, there was one that was discovered, and staff actually caught an error in that when we digitally transmitted their application to HDL, part of their application did not go through, and therefore they scored very low. We had them rescored by HDL, and they did move on. So that left four that did not reach the 80 percent requirement. Of those four, three appealed the decision to the city manager. That appeal was reviewed by HDL, who provided their comments, and then myself and Assistant City Manager David Warren interviewed the applicants or had them present their appeal to us. We considered that appeal. Based on that, we reviewed all of the scores. Of those three, each of the three received points. Additional points, we felt, were justified in some of the categories, and those points were awarded at that time. The results were that one of the applicants did move on to Phase 3, the other two did not. Reserve House, which is before you this morning, did not receive the 80 percent and did not move on to Phase 3, and they appealed that now to you as the city council. In the process this morning, what you should consider is their application and how was it scored fairly, so basically the process. Any information outside of that should not be considered as part of your review of the appeal this morning. And I'll just note, we have Tim Cromarty from HDL, just got here, thanks, Tim, I know traffic's bad out there, and he can answer any questions from HDL's perspective on the review of the applications and et cetera. So with that, I would suggest process, allow the applicant to make their presentation, and then we'll bring him back to council, we can answer questions and deliberate, and then you should also allow public comment in there somewhere, probably right after the presentation, so.
Are we having, are we setting time limits?
That is up to the council. I have not talked to the applicant about how much time they would like for their presentation. I will say, when we did our appeal, we gave them 30 minutes.
Talk into your mic. Thank you. You're upsetting George.
It's up to you.
I ask if we were setting time limits, and I guess you didn't hear me, except, but thank you.
No, I'm sorry, Patty. I got a secret signal from behind you.
Okay.
All right, Cleve, is in the clarification, the items to consider would be just that that was in the original application, correct?
That's correct.
All right, any questions for Cleve? Are my colleagues on this side? All right, thoughts on time limits for the proceedings this morning?
I would think that 30 minutes would be, unless there's any objection, 30 minutes would be an appropriate time.
I agree with that.
Mr. Saragosa?
That sounds good to me.
All right, so we'll allow the applicant, once we get started, we'll give them 30 minutes to make their presentations to the council. Then, once we've heard from the applicant and gotten any information, then we will allow public comment on what's been presented at that point. I'm looking, there's a smile I wanted from the city attorney.
I would just comment on that, that again, while you're going to be allowing public comment, the issue before you relates to the application.
Right.
So comments as to how wonderful these people are really don't relate to the application. That doesn't mean they can't say that.
Right.
They certainly may get up there and have the ability to say that, but the things you are going to be considering relates to the content of Reserve House's application.
Okay. Thank you, John. And we'll remember that we're focusing back on that application throughout this morning's proceedings. All right, are we good? All right, very good. Then I would like to go ahead and invite the applicant, or the appellant, to step forward, and we'll go ahead and say that we began at 9:13, and we'll allow you 30 minutes from this point. Of course, you're welcome to use 19 or 21 minutes, or whatever you feel comfortable with, but please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you could introduce yourself for our audience and folks at home.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your service. My name is Scott Martin. I'm the owner of Appleseed Horticulture, 560 Placerville Drive. I've operated that small business at that location for a better part of five years now.
My name is Jeremy Delaba.
Could you speak, can we make sure that you speak? It is on, George, so can we, if you could get a little closer to the mic?
You did hear my name, Scott Martin, owner of Appleseed Horticulture.
Yes, thank you, Scott.
My name is Jeremy Delaba, and I'm a 50 percent, you know, applicant for Reserve House.
Should we tell them the qualifications? I think we can do that at the end.
All right.
We'll start with the location.
Cut the lights.
And to summarize, we felt that the application process was somewhat subjective, and we are trying, I want to learn, I'm going to be successful in this industry, I want to learn how I could do a better job of putting in an application that scores very well, so I appreciate any and all feedback. So here, on the location portion, Placerville, California LLC is another applicant. They received 170 out of 200 points, with a location that is within 200 feet of a school and church. Yet they scored essentially the same amount of points as us, with no sensitive use areas within a half mile. According to ordinance number 1694, their location is unfit. Another portion.
Also, also based on compliance, state compliance is 600 feet, so as far as, I know you guys did a variance of 250, but you guys went down on the variance, and then they still did not meet that standard, and they got almost pretty much the same score as we got. We found that to be unfair.
And we're just trying to make sense of this, so we can learn from this experience. Should I read this portion?
I think we can move on to the next page.
The HDL point of concern states that the application failed to provide distances for locations, but this wasn't entirely accurate, as far as we could tell from our application, you'll see. On page 16 of our application, we stated there are no sensitive use areas within 250 feet of this location. We have it circled there on the diagram. On page 147 of our application is a vicinity map with a scale also showing there are no sensitive use areas within our locations. And we pointed this out on our first appeal, and we received no additional points, so we were a little confused there as to why we wouldn't score a little bit better, now knowing that we did point that stuff out.
Also, you know, in the appendix, it asked for just specific criteria, and we submitted the criteria, and we weren't given the points. So we, once again, we were confused on why we were not given those points, when we actually did submit the information on the application.
And again, we point out that the state mandate is 600 feet away from sensitive use areas, and as far as the other Placerville Drive applicants, we have the Boys and Girls Club down near most of the other applicants, whereas we are the one furthest away from the Boys and Girls Club, and still it just doesn't make sense why our location wasn't a little bit better with all those things going for us. On this page, you'll see of our rebuttal, this points out that HDL's point of concern that none of the plans identified limited access area. Page 146 of our application, you will see the Safety and Security Plans Legend showing the abbreviation SA, which means Secure Area Limited Access. Now, we used a local contractor named Jim Malt to do our site and plans and vicinity maps, and this was his standards of practice in this industry for the last 20 years. That was a more than sufficient way to show the limited access areas, but yet, we didn't understand why HDL said that none of the plans identify limited access areas, and we didn't receive any new additional points when we pointed that out. Next page, Business Plan. Out of 400 points, we scored 280. We've got a pretty low score on our business plan. Dry Diggins, their business plan had more issues than ours as far as points of concern. They had a lack of day-to-day operations, as well as no schedule for beginning operations. They received 340 points, that's 60 points higher than us. We're just trying to make sense of this. Our business plan, though lacking specific SOPs, did include all of the day-to-day operations and a schedule for beginning operations. We met all criteria in the appendix, which is what we had to use to figure out how to, what kind of information we needed to give to HDL. All we had was that appendix, so we read it over and over and tried to follow it to the best of our ability. We met all criteria in the appendix, yet we only received 280 points. And as you can see, Dry Diggins outscored us by 60. Next part of the business plan. Point of concern from HDL. The business plan does not include track and trace procedures. Now, we had always, from the get-go, planned to use Baker Point-of-sale software. It's a very intricate software system, a track and trace program that keeps track of everything to do with this business, is a cannabis-specific track and trace and point-of-sale.
Also, Baker is used by all the largest dispensary owners and cannabis operators in Colorado, as well as California. It is the number-one software. It's extremely expensive, but it tracks everything from the point of a clone, all the way to where it's harvested, manufactured, distribution, all the way to retail. It is the number-one track and trace system.
So on pages 24, 32, 39, and 48 of our application, you'll find our track and trace procedures via the Baker Point-of-sale software. Each time it requested it, we pointed out which way we are planning to use, what software we are planning to use to do track and trace, and we felt that that was a very quality track and trace program to use.
Did you read the point of concern?
Yeah, I did. A little bit more on the business plan. Our business plan creates more tax revenue than any of the other applicants, as we could see. Our projected tax revenue for cultivation at $7 a square foot would be $15,300 per year that the city could use to their discretion. Retail would be 4 percent of grocery receipts with our projected revenues, that would be $360,000 a year. On distribution, 2 percent of grocery receipts, that would be a projection of $213,360 a year in tax revenue. And then again, on manufacturing, 2.5 percent of the grocery receipts. We have $171,900, for a total of $760,560 projected revenue going to the city of Placerville.
I would also like to add that I'm part-owner in a packaging company, and what I would love to do with this micro-license is a white-label company. A white-label means a dispensary owner that doesn't have all of the other licenses can come to me, give me what brand he wants. I have a marketing team. We basically take their packaging that they like. We produce the cannabis, we produce all of the products from manufacturing. We package it for them, and then we put it right there on their shelves. I've gone to over 30 dispensaries in the Bay Area, LA, and Sacramento. I had a 95 percent approval rating that they wanted to sign a contract with me immediately. This has not been provided by any other company in the state of California, so this is fresh, and this is new. And I have, once again, I have several individuals that their total sales are $50,000 a day, and they want all of our products on their shelves, because nobody else is willing to do this for them. Everybody wants their own brand to be successful. What we do is we allow you to create your own brand, and we allow the dispensaries to actually use our licensing so that we can put it on their shelves, of course, making a profit at the same time. Thank you.
And this white-label company is how we were able to reach our projections as far as revenues.
Which, by the way, came to $19 million, which, in gross sales per year, for the size facility that we have. And we also planned on expanding, right here in Placerville. We wanted to make Placerville our home location, which would create more tax revenue for you guys than any of the other applicants combined, almost, in the reality of, as if three to five licenses were handed out. I'll be able to make more money for you guys than the other three to five that you would actually hand out. And that's, and once again, dispensary owners are already asking for it, it is already sold. Yes.
And move on to neighborhood compatibility. Placerville, California LLC, they received the highest points of 276 for their neighborhood compatibility, yet are located next to a church and a school, so we were a little confused by that. We felt we had a really good location, and that was something that we were really excited about.
Yeah. The other thing that confused me, once again, that was in location, the Placerville LLC. I've spoke to a few of the mothers, PTA, of Sierra Elementary, and they're not happy. There will be a problem with that. And the fact that they were giving the highest neighborhood compatibility score when there's going to be five, six, seven-year-old children that close to the school, that doesn't make any sense to me. And in the ordinance, it states that it's a straight line, it's not as you walk through the streets. In the ordinance, it's straight line. In state ordinance, it's straight line. So they're actually not state compliant. That is a neighborhood compatibility problem. I own three licenses in Sacramento, and we've actually had to deal with appeals also in Sacramento. And this is, I spoke with the BCC, and the BCC said, you know, when I spoke to them about individuals being that close to children, they highly recommend that you do not do that. So for that, I don't understand how they could receive such a high score when we received such a low score. And once again, we have no compatibility problems. HDL gave us absolutely no points of concern in this area, yet we got one of the lowest, and other people with points of concern outscored us dramatically. It just doesn't make sense.
Can I read this?
Yes, go ahead.
So on TMG Placerville LLC, another applicant, they had one point of concern and received 252 points, outscoring us by 42 points.
Basically, they had incomplete neighborhood compatibility plan.
And they basically had an incomplete neighborhood compatibility plan. Next, move on to air quality. Should I wait for the vice mayor to come back?
I would prefer you did, so we have a complete review. He stepped out for a second, but go ahead.
Do you guys have any questions?
Well, let's just hold for a moment.
Okay.
Hopefully, he'll be right back. Thank you. Sorry for that.
So moving on to our air quality plan. Our air quality plan is compliant with the city ordinance, yet we received one of the lowest scores of all the applicants. We're just trying to make sense of this again. And it.
Ordinance, also point out what?
Oh, yeah. Ordinance number 1694, page 31. Air quality plan must demonstrate the air circulation does not impact the employee's health and welfare, nor the surrounding businesses. Number one, an exhaust air filtration system with odor control that prevents internal odors from being emitted externally. We had that included on our plan. An air system that creates negative air pressure between the commercial cannabis business interior and exterior, so that the odors generated inside the commercial cannabis business are not detectable on the outside of the commercial cannabis business. We received a score of 70 out of 100, and we included also on their separate air system so that employees would not be subjected to any kind of CO2 that we might have in a grow room.
Also, it's actually, in the ordinance, your air quality plan is a good air quality plan of, we actually used it in Sacramento, and we have had absolutely no problems, and we have 168 lights and flour. It's quite stinky on the inside of the building. However, you can be five-foot outside of the building, and that negative air pressure actually works quite well. We actually, you know, we basically, our air quality plan basically matched exactly what you wanted, yet once again, we received a low score.
Do you want to mention how the two different application processes were so different between Zach and here?
No.
Move on to the safety plan. HDL's point of concern states we have no safety plan. We hired a local licensed contractor, Brian Bunch of Sierra Security and Fire, to do our safety plan, as seen below. Also, on page 146 of our application, we included fire extinguishers and an evacuation route in our safety and security floor plan. We also included limited access areas, key fob doors that employees couldn't enter as a way to control the security on the entire piece of property, and we included mostly all on that map. But they, yet, HDL said we had no safety plan whatsoever, so we were really confused by that.
Also, I'd also like to point out that we've, throughout our application, we tried to go local, because we are local enterprise, so we wanted to support other local enterprises. And we plan on, in the build-out, if we are handed a license, we plan on using all local contractors, we plan on using local as much as possible, because we want to support our community. And, you know, he is a licensed contractor by the state of California. We felt as though he's done this several times, he's done several of the businesses in Placerville. So we felt as though Brian gave us a quality safety plan.
And further, we felt we had, we used the appendix to figure out what information you guys were looking for, HDL was looking for, and we felt we had met the mark on that, but again, our scores didn't reflect so. And we're just trying to learn.
This is just repeating, but you should go through it.
On this page of this slide, safety plan, it says it should include an assessment of the facility's fire safety by a qualified fire prevention and suppression consultant, again with Brian Bunch is who we chose to go with. He's also licensed by the state of California to do that job.
And then show that two of the other applicants.
Yeah, on the two other applications, HDL did have points of concern. The application on TMG Placerville LLC, the application lacked a safety plan prepared by a qualified fire prevention or suppression consultant, yet they scored higher.
Yes.
Yet they scored higher than us.
As well as tranquil metals.
Same goes with tranquil metals on the right of the page.
And it actually.
Go ahead.
In the appendix, it actually in bold said that it was to be done by a qualified consultant, licensed. Somehow, these guys without a licensed consultant outscored us. It just, once again, it's confusing. Yes.
That wraps it up.
And we felt it was, we are one of the only, we're the only local business, I've been here for five years doing business in this city and creating tax revenues. It didn't make sense that all the local points were put on Phase 3, so if we don't make it to Phase 3, we don't get any local points. And it doesn't seem like that encourages local enterprise. And eventually, and the people that are ahead of us in scoring, just quite a few of them, aren't from this area, they're not locals.
100 miles away.
They're from the Bay Area and from Southern California, and I felt like Placerville's always been about the good old boys and about locals and local enterprises. Anything else you want to say?
The other thing is qualifications of owners. Scott and I both have owned several licenses medicinally, as well as recreationally, and that's also on Phase 3. So the fact of the matter is, is being a local didn't matter. Being qualified doesn't matter until you make it to the very end. That doesn't make sense to me. Once again, this, you know, we are the only local enterprise, the only one. Pure Life, which is Kelly, Placerville LLC, we like Kelly, we've worked with Kelly, and we've backed Kelly through all the struggles that he has been. However, he is outside, he is a county license, so we were hoping that by being a local enterprise, we would be, we'd given a little bit more leniency, but we'll see how this works out. Anything else?
I thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. Just want to get better at it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Scott, and Jeremy, and thank you for preparing and presenting your various points of concern with what HDL and the city has done to this point. Makes it much easier to follow the concerns. Let me ask if the council members have any questions for you both before we?
I don't have any at this time.
Michael Dennis?
Not at this time, probably after we hear from HDL, we might have more.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
We'll move on, bring it back to Cleve here for a minute, and I assume, Tim, thank you for being here, getting here this morning. We had the town kind of congested just for you.
I noticed.
Cleve, did you have any comments up to this point in what the appellant has presented? Cleve, did you have any comments up to this point and what the applicant has presented? Or comments?
I don't believe so at this point. I'm more interested in the council's questions that you may have of us and the process myself and Dave Warren, our assistant city manager, did in reviewing the original appeal from, from them, so.
With HDL here, were we going to hear their response to all of these, to these specific concerns?
Well, I don't know if Tim's prepared to do that or are you, Tim? Would you like to do that and address that at this point? Is that, is that all right?
Yeah, that was what I was going to go through.
That was my concern, that I would like to go to each one and, and, you know.
I think it would be helpful.
Thank you.
Tim, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself for our, for our audience.
I am Tim Cromartie, consultant with HDL Companies, hired by the city to assist with this process. I want to point out a few things in regard to the comments that were made with respect to the location. The applicant did in fact fail to provide distances for sensitive locations. It is not sufficient to make a blank statement that there are no sensitive uses within a prescribed area, in this case, 250 feet. The application must show that the applicant has done the research and has identified where the nearest sensitive uses are so that it's clear to the reviewer that they know there's a, even if it's 400 feet or a mile away, there's a school or a church or what have you within a certain radius so that you can be confident they've done their homework. A blank statement is not sufficient. That is frankly, a common problem. With respect to failure to ID limited access areas, the designation SA secured area is arguably, that could be considered a limited access area, but it is important that applicants use terminology that is consistent with state standards. When they deviate from that, they risk a possible misinterpretation by the person reviewing the application. So that may have been a factor in that. With respect to the business plan, the lack of standing operating procedures is a significant deficiency. It speaks to the quality and level of training that will be made for the employees. If you don't have SOPs, how can the reviewer be confident that you've got a, a training program in place and that there are consistent procedures that your employees will follow with respect to all aspects of running the business? Now in regard to track and trace procedure, those, that description, that discussion either may not have been sufficiently detailed or may not have been in the appropriate place in the application. Those are factors which tend to have the scores downgraded a bit. Next, with respect to revenue projections, revenue projections are a definitely taken into account. I know of no community where they are a decisive factor in who is awarded the permit because very often that information is, they're just that projections. They may or may not meet the benchmark and you certainly don't necessarily pull someone's permit because they haven't met the revenue that are projected. With respect to neighborhood compatibility, there are many factors other than the nearest sensitive uses, which is what the applicant chose to highlight. Neighborhood compatibility is, consists of a variety of factors, including odor control, demonstration of a proactive approach to working with your neighbors, security, approach to maintaining the property, waste disposal, if any, proximity to children. But again, that's a local decision, just as you have the authority under state law to deviate from the 600-foot default buffer zones for sensitive uses. So long as they're codified, it is your decision within your police power and your land use authority to make your own decisions with respect to how close those businesses are to children. The neighborhood compatibility, sounds like it simply was not a very good plan. On air quality, app, again, the applicant made a statement that it was consistent with the ordinance. They didn't necessarily say why. They mentioned exhaust air filtration and negative air pressure, but there may have been other factors. On the safety plan, the applicant mentioned fire extinguishers, fire evacuation plans. However, there are many other factors, again, that go into a comprehensive safety plan and from the description, it sounds as though it was not sufficiently robust. For example, an alarm system, emergency procedures dealing with robbery, active shooter incidents, natural disasters. Those are many of the things that go into a comprehensive safety plan, so it's not simply fire safety and whether or not you have fire extinguishers on the premises and training for how to use them. If they use the qualified fire safety consultant, then those other factors should have been included in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions from the council for Tim, the information he's provided? All right. Oh, good. Councilmember Thomas.
You, you talk about a lot of things that are, but you, I don't, it doesn't feel like you're, you're speaking specifically to their, to their application when you say that may be some issues with their application. I guess I want to know, do you have the cardinal knowledge to speak specific to their application when it comes to, for instance, air quality? When they say they've met every standard, you say that may be an issue with their air quality, but can you speak specific to that?
Honestly, I can't, I'd have to review it again.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment for the portion of the meeting and invite any member of the public, please.
Mayor, can I just, and I know you have this, but just a reminder, you do have HDL's response to the appeal that is included in your packet that does provide some of that detail, but not of it. That is Exhibit E. So it looks like this, Exhibit E, their responses in red, you have that available, so.
All right, and we have had that...
That's it, Patty.
Since, yeah. All right, thank you, Cleve. All right, I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item. Any member of the public that wishes to address the council on this item, please come forward, state your name for the record. We'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We don't have the famous three-minute clock. This would not, I'm going to invite the applicant, or excuse me, the applicant to come up once we're done with public comment. We're keep, we're going to keep the three minutes up here. Good morning.
Hello. My name is Wendy Chadwick and I work with both Jeremy and Scott in their current businesses. I have been managing and running Appleseed Horticulture for the past three years, basically, along with Scott. And I just wanted you to know a few things about what position Scott and Jeremy have put themselves in by advocating for the legalization as well as permitting of cannabis businesses in Placerville. In doing that, we've put ourself in a position, he's put himself in a position to be sort of ostracized by his own community in that advocating for legalization in order to make it work for you guys hurts the business, basically. We had 11 days with no PG&E last month. We've lost 30% of our business and our customer base has shrunk by probably 30%, simply because we have, you know, as you know, there are numerous black market people out there who don't want this to happen. So just know that throwing, not allowing him to move on in the process hurts his ability to continue to do business anywhere in Placerville. Also, I would like to comment on the HDL person's comments. Commenting that you may or may not be able to, it may or may not happen is not a comment. It's, you have his rebuttal, we just gave additional information, he didn't give you information, additional information based on the information we gave you. He just told you things may or may not be, so I'd like you to consider that. And most of all, I just want you to know that they have advocated locally for legalization and permitting and for you to have dispensaries in this town at the expense of their own, the good of themselves often, and I would like you to just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? If you wouldn't, please state your name and we'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's William Terry and I'd just like to say, Scott and Wendy of Appleseed, they've been, I work with the local youth for kids for basketball and with their help in the community for the past four to six years, they've gotten kids four right scholarships to Division One, Division Two schools with the support of them. And I'd just like to say that, there's a few others, but they, with their continued support, some of these boys would have never made it out of here. So I just like to put that out there. Not that they deserve to be, you know, but they, with what the business they have right now, they've supported the heck out of the community. We just want to say we appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public? Please come up. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Alex Goslin. I'm the owner of Cannablu Dispensary in South Lake Tahoe. I've lived here in the county for 22 years. Cannablu will be opening early next year. We've already made an alliance with the guys at the Reserve House with Scott and Jeremy. We plan on seeing around 900 patients a day, bringing in around $60,000 in day per business. We're really counting on the guys at Reserve House to fulfill our promise to Lake Tahoe and El Dorado County to support local businesses, really trying to bring a true farm-to-face experience to our residents. I trust Scott and Jeremy. I really need these guys and the community needs these guys. We have a commitment to keep as many of these tax dollars right here in the county and Scott and Jeremy can help us meet this goal. Having local owners that understand the community is key to having a strong, robust cannabis market where there's mutual trust and respect with the law enforcement and the community in whole. Reserve House, if given the opportunity here today, will be doing the majority of our white label products. This is going to help Placerville, Lake Tahoe and El Dorado County in its entirety. What we're doing at Cannablu is we're creating a white label products that will place on what we're calling our cause table. So what we're doing is when a customer comes in, we're going to have tables with unique products on there. Cannablu, we're going to have our own, our, our own house brand, Cannablu, which will go towards Lake Clarity efforts, towards keeping Tahoe blue. Another brand that I've been working on with Scott and Jeremy is called Firebreak, which will be going to displaced California wildfire victims. Treehouse to plant a new tree. All things that, that could really help the county in its whole. Again, I, I really, I really urge you guys to, you know, it seems like there was a lot of discrepancies here. I know that there was another applicant that was allowed to move forward because of those. I really think that you should give Scott and Jeremy the opportunity to be able to move forward to the, to the next step where their local points can kick in. You know, I think locals really care about other locals. I know Scott and Jeremy well, both, and I know they both really care about the locals. I, I think this license would be in, taken in great care if, if having the opportunity be in their hands and I know they wouldn't let you guys down. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the, let me see, let me just stop, please. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's William Katz. I own a local business, Omoco, and I manufacture fertilizer that Appleseed sells for me. They support me, they've been behind me 100%. They put forth a very compelling argument and I'm just urging you to reconsider and let them go on to the next phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down this morning. Is there another member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Evelyn Veerkamp, Placerville. I cannot speak to this particular application, but I'd like to make three points. One is that at the moment, Placerville is losing a massive amount of sales point with, a sales point, excuse me, I'm not accustomed anymore longer to speaking in public. Placerville is losing an enormous amount of sales, sales tax revenue by the restrictions that have been placed on these groups. I have no idea how much, but I'm sure there are a lot of people who could give you an accurate estimate. The second thing is that the restrictions on these groups who want to work legally make one reflect upon what the consequences were of prohibition. And if anybody has forgotten, of course, we, probably nobody was here during prohibition, but if we've forgotten our history lessons about prohibition, that was really the beginning of organized crime in this, violent organized crime in the United States and you can go back and look it up, it's easy to find. So I think people who are trying to do it the legal way are helping us and the sooner there is no more illegal or black market work, the better off we'll be. We might avoid some really unfortunate incidents such as we have seen in the past couple of weeks, incident that we saw a couple of weeks ago. And lastly, I would like to say that I really regret that this meeting, I, I don't understand what's happening because I see a video, videographer over in the corner, but this meeting is not being televised and there are a lot, I can't say a lot of people, but there are people in Placerville like myself who really look forward to the video recording, the televising of these meetings. They are, they, they enable a greater amount of information in the city and they are an important document about what actually happened. So I would like to ask, who made the decision not to record this or not broadcast this meeting? And perhaps in the future, I would like to suggest that if a meeting is not going to be broadcast, to please note it on the agendas that go out so that we know in advance. You might get more people here if they knew you weren't going to televise the meetings. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approach the podium, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council before I invite the appellants to respond with any additional information. Cleve, did you have any comments or issues to this point, any of the public comments? This is regarding the videographer.
Yeah, I, I can address that, Evelyn. That was my decision not to broadcast this live. It will be made available on our website for anyone to view later. And the reason for that, I want to note that there is a public meeting when all of the applicants that are moving forward will be, be there and the, the public will come out and be able to comment on those. That will be noted, noticed and it will be broadcast at that time. This was specific to this one applicant, the appeal, and my thoughts was it was not necessarily important to the broader community. Maybe I was wrong and I apologize for that if I was, but anyway, that was the reason why I determined not to broadcast it live. We can make it available on our website at a, at a later date though, so. I don't believe I had any further comment, again, unless council has questions on any of the items.
I, I do. There, there is, you talk about competitiveness in here. Can you speak a little bit to that in terms of what I don't see is the other applicants and I see in here it states that competitively, they may not have risen to the same level as some of the other applicants? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, we, the way I saw it was that they, they had to meet a, a basic requirement and that was done in phase one. When they submitted their applications, our Development Services Director, Pierre Vas, checked off whether or not they had everything in there that, you know, labeled that was required to be in the plan. So that was phase one and that was completed. Phase two then went to this review where they received points for each of those items and based on the detail and analysis that was in each application, they got more points or less points. And in the appeal hearing that came to myself and Assistant City Manager David Warren, we went through those other applications to look at that and compare and see where those were at. And that was part of the process that we used to determine whether or not the detail was there and how complete they were when we reviewed them, so.
Specifically, when they, you know, for reference, because I want to understand this completely.
Sure.
The, when you look at the air quality, something we talked about, they got 70 out of 100. They said they, they met the city's standards. Now, when they say they met the city's standards and in here it states that they basically recited the city's standards as their, as what they were doing. Now, did other applicants rise to a higher level of detail and specificity in how they were?
As I recall, yes, they did. For example, they would gave models, breakdown of equipment and et cetera that they would be using in, in pretty significant detail in some of those, some more than others, obviously. And so it talked more about how the equipment were, and I can't remember all the detail of that, but it was quite a bit more detail in, in how that equipment... of that, but it was quite a bit more detail in how that equipment was, what the equipment was, and how it would accomplish that process of the odor control and et cetera.
If I might, excuse me, Councilmember Thomas, I would encourage the counsel, if you, if you desire, to take a recess and review some of those other applications that are specifically mentioned in the appeal. Just those portions of those applications that are mentioned in the appeal. So you can get a feel for a comparison of what the applicant, the appellant provided versus the information and detail provided by those.
Yeah, we, we have those available in the, in the back room, in your break room, if you would like to do that. I encourage you to take a recess and do that. You, as I look at our city attorney, should not deliberate amongst one another on those issues, but you can review those, and then we can come back and deliberate here if you would like to do that.
What's the desire of the counsel?
Well, for myself, I would find that helpful, just to get a little bit more context to the answers from HDL, because without looking at them, it's hard to fully grasp that context without seeing the other, at least those other examples. So for me, it would be helpful.
And do we have all that information available here on site, Cleve?
Yes.
I, I have to say that I do agree with everything that Vice Mayor Saragosa said. I had a real problem reviewing this whole thing because I didn't have any comparisons. And it's really difficult to try to weigh, you know, what anybody's talking about, because I have no idea.
Right. I mean, we have the scores, but the scores don't tell you
Exactly, but, exactly.
The rest of the story.
Exactly.
All right, before we go any further, I want to make sure that the app, the appellant has an opportunity to address the counsel again on the issues that have been presented. To this point, you've heard the public comments.
Yes.
And you've heard some of the questions. If we do go to a recess, I want to make sure that we do hear from you before that happens, so please.
Okay, so in, throughout the, the appeal, this is straight from HDL's review. What you see captioned in there is from the review. We actually just copied it and put it in, you know, in plain view. The other thing is, is all we're asking for is equality today. This is a point scale system. If you look at throughout the appeal, I showed you where people that didn't submit the same information or as much information as we did scored a higher score. And all we need is 70, 75 points to go forward to Phase Three, and what I've showed you is over 130. And that's equality. This is, what I showed you on all the point scales is basically, this is what someone else scored when they submitted something that was lower than what we submitted. This should be an easy decision. This is, once again, this is, it's, the review was on every slide from HDL. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, actually, also, on the review, HDL gave us no points of concern for neighborhood compatibility. And, you know, earlier, you know, we clearly showed that there was other applicants that had issues, major issues, that outscored us, when HDL said we had absolutely no problems with your neighborhood compatibility. So as far as competitiveness goes, once again, that would confuse me on why we wouldn't be receiving those points. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeremy, did you have anything to add?
Scott. Scott Martin. Yes, when it came to competitiveness, that seemed to me like it stated something more like the most paper wins. When we did our licensing in Sacramento, and we included an enormous amount of documentation, it wasn't well-received. He had to get through all that documentation to get to where the information that he needed, so we tried to streamline ours. And all we had to go off of was the appendix. I appreciate his comments. I thank them, and I'm glad he gave those to us, because it teaches me what I should have done in high, if I could go back, I would put a lot more documentation in there if I could go back. But all I had to go off of was the appendix. We did our own application. We didn't hire an attorney to do it. So if you, when you're doing your review, you should probably look at that appendix and the competitiveness comments, and a few others kind of are hindsight, saying we should have known to do more, but we only had the application as a guide. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, is there any questions from the appellants before I ask Cleve a question?
I don't have a question so much for the appellants, but I'm going to ask Cleve or John, how much merit should we put in? Like, they called to our attention that they hired local companies who, you know, like the fire suppression and the, you know, and supposedly, they did their homework for what we were asking. How much merit do we give to those, to that? Am I making myself clear?
I think I understand your question. The issue of local resources, if you will, come up later during the selection process. It's not at this phase. This phase is strictly based upon the application and the contents of the application.
Are they, are they to blame for maybe not giving enough information for this? That's where I'm getting.
Depends what they were asked to do as well, you know? So I can't answer that question, but I, I think what you really want to do is confine your review to what is in the application at this point, not things that are going to happen in the future.
Or whose fault.
Or consultants. You know, no matter who the consultant was, whether he's local or whether he came from Los Angeles, it doesn't matter. It's the information contained in the application that's the important thing. And in comparison of the information in the appellant's application to those where they say they scored higher than we did, and yet we had better information or more information, that's kind of where your review is going to have to focus, I think.
All right, and I'd like to just quickly, Cleve, if you could, summarize where we are in this process, because there is some concern about moving forward. How many applicants did we receive, or how many, excuse me, applications did we receive?
Okay, sure, we received 13 applications. Of those, at this point, 10 have moved forward. We have two that didn't, have not moved forward. One appealed and did not make it past appeal and did not appeal any further. One did not appeal. And then we had one, as I mentioned, that did move in, moved forward, made the 10. So we have a total of 10 applications in the process. If a Reserve House were to move forward, that would make 11. In the current process, we have, our cannabis committee has interviewed those 10 applications. If Reserve House moves forward, we will, we will set that up and interview them also, which is basically a portion of Phase Three going forward. They would be reviewed and scored at that point. I would encourage you, in fact, request, that if you decide that they should move forward, but it should be through the process of adding points to them in certain categories where you feel they were underscored, because the point system is cumulative to the next process. And therefore, what they score here will move on to the next process and will be added to what they score in the next, in Phase Three. And therefore, we need that, those points to determine where that is. So, and then, following, following that, once we do the interviews, we will have a public meeting process, and that will give the public a chance to comment on each of the applicants. We will present the applicants, their location, what they're planning to do, et cetera, just a brief outline of them, and then we will allow public comment on each one of those. That's not a council meeting. That will be done by staff. Obviously, council is welcome to be there, but it'll be a staff-run hearing that we will do and allow the public to comment on each of those, of the applications that are moving forward, either 10 or 11 at that time.
Cleve, when do you anticipate that public meeting process?
We're, we're ready to do that. We haven't scheduled it because we are waiting to complete this process. This has set us back a little bit in order to move forward with that, so. But I assume that once we make the decision on this, if this applicant moves forward, we'll probably need at least two weeks to schedule and do the interview process for them. And then following that, we would schedule a public meeting, probably about two weeks out behind that. So we're probably at least a month away from the public meeting. It gets a little tricky, obviously, going into the holiday season and when you can do that and make everything work, but our goal is to try and have that public meeting prior to the end of the year.
And how many members are on that review committee? We have councilmember.
There are, there are four. Councilmember Taylor, former mayor, councilmember John Clarici, Pierre Vas from our Development Services Division, and then our Joe Wren, commander in our police department.
Are you on that committee?
I am not on that committee.
Because?
I, they will make a recommendation to me. I will do a final review, and the council has given me the task of making the final decision for the final three that were, up to three, that would be recommended to, to go forward, so.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
So when we get to whatever that final three is, does that come to us to?
The, the way I see it is that I, it would come to you simply to award the licenses. There is an appeal process. But as I read the, the way you set up the ordinance, it does not come back to you to actually approve those. That's done at my level. But again, there is an appeal process, again, that if those final three, any of the other applicants wanted to appeal that, they could, so.
I just thought it would be helpful to kind of refresh everyone with where we are in the process, and who has the different roles, and our, our potential timelines on it. Penny?
I have a question. If, in the process, we find that these folks can move forward, and you're talking about having review later on of all, are they going to be allowed to, to talk about what was found, like their heirs, or is, they were, in other words, the fellow said that they realize now that they should have given more, that they did not realize? Are they going to be allowed to?
For Phase Three, there's not another submittal process. However, as part of the interview process, absolutely, that, that's when they have the opportunity to talk more about their application and add information. I'm looking at Tim specifically, Tim, isn't that correct? That during the interview process, they can bring in more information? That's their opportunity to sell who they are and what they do.
Yes, indeed, and I have some more detailed responses after having had an opportunity to look at our, our document to address specific points in the application, if you have just a moment. It may save you some time when you recess to review the document yourselves.
The question to the counsel, I believe, is we would like to receive that information, please.
Okay.
And thank you, Cleve.
Very good. In the business plan, the daily activities described are minimal. It is important for applicants to convey what the various daily activities will be, whether it's retail, manufacturing, et cetera, so that they clearly have a command of what the daily business activities will be of the license for which they are applying. They also failed to identify necessary equipment for the manufacturing operation, for example. The SOPs for, the SOPs, the best practices, the training procedures were all mentioned, but they were not included in the application. That was a problem. That will get you points deducted. Their startup budget did not include the retail, the real estate purchase price of $1 million, so that was problematic. It failed to show that they were sufficiently capitalized. In other words, they had a figure identified for what it took to do tenant improvements, get the doors open, sustain the business for three months, but then the capital they had on hand was short of that figure. They also, with respect to their projected, the revenue projections, they failed to provide the underlying accounting assumptions to substantiate their revenue projections. They also, their letter in regard to the safety plan, there was a letter, a one-page letter, that included a list of recommendations for a safety plan, but that did not fulfill the requirements in Appendix A. That was not in itself a safety plan. That was sort of an outline for what a safety plan would look like if one were done in a comprehensive fashion, which is what was required. They also failed to identify all possible fire or hazardous materials threats. There was no schedule listed for training employees. And going back to the business plan, the cash handling procedures lacked detail. That's very important from a security standpoint. You want to know whether, for example, they have a, I guess the best word is a trigger within each individual cash drawer at a point of sale, and that trigger would be a dollar amount, usually it's around $2,000, for that drawer to be emptied, that cash to be put in a drop safe, and for them to start over. Those kinds of details were lacking. Finally, they allowed, again, as I said earlier, the document did not follow with respect to limited access, did not follow the Bureau of Cannabis Control's terminology. In other words, they did not use limited access area in the legend. That's a problem. With respect to air quality, that plan lacked sufficient detail. There are a series of industry best practices that are established with regard to air quality. They are as follows. Schematics of the HVAC system, details as to the brand of equipment that will be used, the type of HVAC system, the type of carbon filters that will be employed, as well as standard operating procedures for odor management and complaints. Those things were all lacking from the application. Hopefully, that will be of some help.
I think it was. Jim? Dennis, did you have a question for our HDL consultant?
I had one. You mentioned on the capitalization and sort of the lack of specificity on that, I think in conjunction was that $1 million. Was there, to your knowledge, was there any other of the 10 applicants that have moved through? Did any of those have similar issues with that, or where do they all have a, did they all have a capitalization plan in?
Since the, those other businesses were not appealing, I didn't actually look at them, and I didn't do the initial review myself, so I cannot answer that question. I think it is unlikely, given that they have advanced to the point that they're being moved forward to a presentation, because I have to tell you, lack of sufficient capitalization is a major defect in any applicant's business plan. And that will, that will trip them up, because it calls into question their ability to actually get the doors open. And without that, the permit itself, assuming you award it, is meaningless.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to let the applicant speak again to what the, the comments that we've just heard from our consultant from HDL.
As far as the revenue to get this business started, we do have it. As you know, the banks do not work with us. So in Sacramento, we are forced to have a safe room, which is cash. I can't bring cash in here. Nobody asked me, and I will not bring cash into here. As far as SOPs go, this is public knowledge. A lot of, it took us a long time to, to master our craft, and HDL was asking us to just throw it out there for everybody to steal. I've worked in Colorado, I've worked in Oregon, and several other states as consultant, as a consultant to large-scale companies, and you have to pay for that information. I had to pay for it. Why shouldn't everybody else have to pay for it? As far as the purchase of the property goes, the owner wants to work with us as far as a for-sale-by-owner. She's not willing to work with us any further at this point, due to the fact that we do not have the license in hand. And if you look at our LOI, that is a part of the contingency. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that we do have the capital. If you guys want me to hire a bunch of bodyguards to come in here, I would gladly do that. I, I think that that, until the banks can work with us, it is really hard for, as a cannabis owner, to actually show proof of funds. And this is a problem that we need to, we need to solve, and it should be solved soon. The federal government is about to start working with the banks. But this is something that already makes our lives extremely difficult. And to be, to have points taken away on something that is not my fault, something that I cannot prove, I, I just think is wrong. And, and every, every business owner in cannabis in California wants their money in a bank. 21 of the 31 dispensaries in Sacramento have been robbed in the last four months, some of them at gunpoint. That puts us in a lot of harm. So, you know, us having to stash our cash is ridiculous, and to be punished for it in an application is wrong. And that's how I feel about that. Thank you.
I would point out that some of the deficiencies they see in our application would have been handled in the planning department. We would have had a full set of detailed plans that would have handled all the different types of equipment as far as ventilation goes. We encapsulated the bulk of it, we felt, but we didn't want to go on and just overwhelm our reviewer with a ton of extra documentation. And we knew that there would be any kind of deficiencies. We'd be working directly with the planning department to make a solid, everything accounted-for type of business. Some of those SOPs, they told us after the fact that we could have included those SOPs, but as long as we wrote confidential on the but as long as we wrote confidential on the paper, but that wasn't in the appendix, or we would have included our SOPs. But we worked really hard to learn to do what we do and we didn't want to just give that out as free information. I felt like a lot of lawyers did these applications and I wonder where they got their SOPs because they don't grow and we do. I thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, back to the council. What's the desire of the council at this point?
I have one question. Is that, is that factually true that we did not tell them that they could? Or is that a, in terms of, um, the confidentiality of their SOPs, is that an industry standard that, that, that you would mark confidential on it and it should be widely known? Or is it something in our application that, that was deficient?
What we have seen is that many, um, in regard to a claim of intellectual property or security concerns about trade secrets being given out, uh, it is at the discretion of the city attorney to, uh, redact anything that is sensitive or that the applicant claims or requests be held, um, out of the, the public view. Generally, the security plan, aspects of the security plan or the security plan in its entirety are redacted. Uh, because for obvious reasons. Generally though, the re- the remainder of the application does not amount to trade secrets. Uh, multiple applicants in multiple cities will submit SOPs. That is just, uh, frankly, them communicating to the city and the app, and the application reviewer specifically that they know how to operate within a regulated market and that they do know how to operate the business for which they're applying for a license. Uh, so that, the SOPs themselves are not necessarily generally considered, uh, sensitive or trade secrets or anything of that nature. The security plan is.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Mr. Driscoll?
I just would, um, echo what Mr. Cromarty said, that the security plan would be redacted. Um, you know, no point in having a security plan if everybody's going to know what your plan is. It doesn't do you a lot of good. Uh, with respect to the business plan, to the extent that it might contain proprietary information, that information would also be redacted and could be concealed and not subject to public disclosure.
Were they made to understand that?
I don't know.
All right. So, uh, would the council like to adjourn? And if we do adjourn, um, for how long? I want to be polite to everyone that's here this morning that's taken time to be at the meeting. Um, I hadn't planned on this part of it.
I would guess you're going to probably be at least 30 minutes.
I would think, yeah.
I would ask for at least that.
Thirty minutes? All right. So it'll be noted that Councilmember Barelli has asked for a 30-minute recess. Now, to make sure that we don't violate the Open Meeting Act or the Brown Act, I, I don't want the council to all go into where we normally go in closed session and, uh, we should, uh?
I, I'm going to ask the city attorney. I think you can do that.
Okay.
I'll ask the city attorney to be there. I'm going to go back there with you, myself and Dave Warren, because we can help you direct you find the, the applications and the specific items you're looking for in those applications. We can help with that and the city attorney will make sure you don't deliberate. How's that?
Yeah, you won't be able to discuss the merits?
What can we discuss?
Well, you shouldn't discuss anything amongst yourselves.
Okay.
You should just look at the application, see what's there, compare them in your own mind in terms of what the appellant has said.
We can ask questions of Cleve or?
If you're looking for a particular item, you can certainly ask for that.
Okay.
But I would not get into anything that would bring in information that would be any part of your deliberative process.
Okay.
All right, very good. All right. So the council will recess until, uh, 10:50. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That area?
It's, uh, 10, 10:57. And welcome everybody back. Sorry it took us a few extra minutes. We appreciate your patience. There's tremendous volumes of information to go through, as you might imagine. All right. Uh, back to order we are. And Mr. Marsh, did you have any comments before I begin?
I do not. Again, just maybe outlining, looking for my report, the, the options you have. Uh, option number one would be to deny the appeal, um, upholding the decision of the city manager. If you do that at the recommendation of the, uh, city attorney, he has requested that we provide findings to that, um, if you take that option. Number two would be to revise the scores, uh, any of the scores. And, and if that results in the minimum 1,200 points, uh, reached, then they would advance to the next phase. And then, uh, third option that I have here is to ask for more information or, uh, additional review that you might want to do. Um, uh, and there are some options there if you want to talk about that. If you're not comfortable at this time, I can, I can let you know what those might be, so.
Mr. Driscoll?
Mr. Mayor, if I might just indicate for the record that during the recess, the city council did look at the, uh, I believe it's appendix A or exhibit A to the, appendix A to the guidelines and review that. The members of the council also looked at the entire application for Reserve Houses. Those portions, when I say entire, those portions of the application that are subject to the appeal. Uh, they looked at, uh, other applications, including Drydiggins, TMG, uh, and Tranquil Meadows, uh, as well as for comparison of some of the points that were raised on appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. And, uh, Cleve, the, um, third, third option that you mentioned, the additional review time, that would actually involve bringing this back at a future date?
Correct, at a future, future meeting.
And if we were to take that option, the council would need to, I would think specifically request so that it was clear, to be fair to the, uh, to the applicants as to what their concerns were and why we were, why we chose that option. All right. Now, thank you. This, that gives us pretty much a clear outline, I think, where the information that we reviewed. And so is there a council member that would like to start out with their thoughts and comments as to what we've just reviewed based on Cleve's, uh, uh, I think accurate steps, either findings, revising a score or, um, asking for additional information?
Oh, boy. This is, um, where do we begin? I looked at, uh, you know, I looked at several points of, of concern that HDL and the city had. And then I also looked at, um, other applications and their, um, specificity on some of the issues. And, uh, in some areas I, I agree with, with it. And then when you look at the application itself and you look at how the application was presented, there was, um, there's, there's a lot of variables involved here. And, uh, in the short time that we had, we actually took a deep dive into several areas. And, uh, and so, you know, just, just, just from an outside point of view, really not outside anymore. Uh, you know, I, I could see where we could add points to, and I started looking at points where, for instance, air quality. Uh, you know, based on the, the, the question that was posed and your response or the request for information, your response, I could see where you provided what the city asked. And while you may not have hit the specificity of other applications, you, you met the threshold, I would say, that would give you that, that, um, uh, give you a, a scoring higher than, and I can see why they scored you low. Because in, if you look at a competitive rate, yeah, I can see why you, your, your score was lower than some of the others because some of the others were far better in detail. However, you met the threshold. So the, one of the questions is, is the threshold, the point at which you get all the points? Or is the threshold the point at which we start scoring everybody and it goes up from there? And I contend that, at least in this situation, you, you met the threshold of the city and that there's, there's points available there for you. If I look at the business plan, I mean, the, 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 your business plan, in my opinion, was lacking in terms, I've done business plans and it was absolutely lacking in comparison to the others in detail and specificity and, and, uh, and so they, you know, you know, that is an obvious place where there was opportunity for points and, and it wasn't there. And I, and I, while not diving too deep on, at least on the outside, I could see there was, there was very little opportunity for points. And I, you know, we're here to give you our honest answers here and, and I think it's important that you, that we do that. When I look at neighborhood compatibility, while you weren't specific, I think you're, you're, you, you hit many of the points that you should have hit, although I don't think you clearly, um, specified them as others have in terms of circles of influence, circles of distance and, and hitting those. So, you know, there's, we, we looked at this. I came up with my own point score. I could see where I can get you to 75 based on my review and I'm happy to share that with the rest.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five points.
They need 75 points.
And, uh, and when we look at the safety plan, there's, there's, uh, I think you, you, in my opinion, I'm, I'm not HDL. I didn't do a deep vi- dive, but, um, based on some of the competitiveness and removing some of the competitiveness and then you meeting the guidelines specified in the application, I, I can find 75 points there myself.
Dennis, let me, thank you for your comment. I greatly appreciate you leading us off because this is difficult. There's a whole, there's, again, volumes of information, very number, very important topics. Dennis has conveniently started us off with location. I mean, we'll go through the, the location business plan, neighborhood compatibility, air quality and safety plan, correct? So let's recognize that that will be our focus. Um, to kind of join on what Dennis said and looking at some other applications during our recess, I could see where, um, that particular, the location for Reserve House, um, it probably should not, it lost points because you just didn't dive into more detail, which I think if you were to do this over again, you'd spend more hours, you'd cut more trees down and print more pages, um, to make sure that there were no questions. So, um, it's just going, if we can do these one, you know, until we get to a point where we maybe don't need to go any further, we've come to a decision point. But for location, uh, the air, I don't see that there should be a loss there compared to the average. Uh, Cleve? Did anybody get all the points on location?
No, nobody received.
Nobody got 200?
No points on any of those.
Your microphone, please. People love to hear from you.
Nobody, nobody received, uh, you know, all of the points on, in any of the categories.
Okay.
For example, on location, if you look through those, the high was 190.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the low was 150.
All right.
They were scored at 176, so approximately in the middle of that.
Okay. Well, thoughts on location? Would we give any additional points there? Is there any addition, is there significant conflicts that make this site score lower? All right. Well, Dennis, did you have any other thoughts? We'll move on to business plan.
I'm good with that one.
Okay. Business plan, any thoughts, comments regarding business? Well, you kind of did business, you, you did business plan.
Dennis did address it and I think he.
Move on to business plan.
He addressed my thoughts. Um, they certainly, as far as I'm concerned, did not give a good business plan at all. And this is so important to the city. I know you might, and I, I got it from the applicant that they were, they were afraid to say things, but the other companies did. And, um, I can understand your reluctance to want to share figures, but, um, and also, the, the other companies I noted on, that you were saying that banks are not allowed to be, but other, the other, some of the other submittals did address that they were doing business with banks. So I'm a little confused on that. So, um, and that's kind of my input on business plan. But it's very important to the city that we have a really good business plan because we have watched and I, and, and these folks, no, nobody was on the council, but I was when the other companies that we dealt with, and this was a long time ago, I know, but it was because of the way they conducted their business that the whole thing just exploded and it really left the city. It gave us a lot of problems, et cetera. So this is a really, really important part of the plan. So. Matt, Mark, they, I think you want to tell him he'll be able to.
Well, hang on just a second.
Tell us, he can answer. He, he wants to object to something I think I'm saying.
Okay. Let me ask Michael if he has any comments on business plan, because we've heard from Dennis.
Yeah, no, I think I had pretty much similar sentiments to everyone else that's been up here. Uh, I, I did notice that a couple of the other applicants did have, uh, verified their income or their, their resources, whether it was from a, a, a third party or whether, or if it was from a bank. So there certainly were, were ways to be able to do that. Um, so, wish that would have been in there as well. But yeah, same, basically had the same response.
All right. Now, before I go any further, I would invite the appellant to come forward again. If you wouldn't mind just reintroducing yourself, so anybody that's.
Jeremy DeLava.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I am running a successful business in Sacramento and I have a micro license and I'd like to let you know there's only 12 in the state. That is a feat in itself. Uh, we were offered $5 million before our final license was even given to us. And the fact of the matter that we completed a micro license, it's huge. Uh, hundreds of people have failed when we actually succeeded. Uh, so as far as business plan goes, I am, I'm actually doing good business. Um, so I, uh, as far as not wanting to put SOPs in, um, it, it probably, if I could go back and do it again, I would have added the SOPs and given my knowledge away for the hopes of getting another micro license so that I could start my white label company. I, you know, it's too late now. The other thing that I wanted to add is everywhere in the ordinance, uh, everywhere in the appendix and everything for the application, nowhere does it state that it was a competitive process. No one ever verbally, or was it written that this was a competitive process? What it said is you submit the information on the appendix. Uh, we didn't see it as, it was, I was ignorant on that, to be perfectly honest with you. It wasn't presented to me verbally or written. Uh, so we wanted, we, we, we gave the specifics, uh, of what we thought you wanted to see. We didn't, uh, once again, in Sacramento, the first time I went into the planning department, we submitted all of our application and I was scolded. I was scolded for giving useless information by the planning department. He told me, listen, I have hundreds of these to go through and I need specific information. Do not come back in here. He made us leave. Well, since then, we've gained friendship with these individuals and we've been awarded a micro license, the hardest license in the state to obtain, and we did it. One of 12. So I do, I do, I do understand the business. Uh, I know my business plan was lacking now that we look back on it. Uh, but we did it ourselves, which by the way, I did not hire a lawyer or a consultant to do any of my applications. And there's two reasons why. Uh, one individual in Long Beach ripped us off for $80,000 uh, because we paid him to do our application and he didn't even submit a full application and we were denied. A gentleman named Anthony Nunes in Sacramento, we paid $30,000 to, in, to get our applications going. And he's the one that actually created the first application at the planning department where we were scolded. Not only that, but he left. He got, he took his money. He, he did not do his job. So I wanted to do my own. I want to, I know this industry. I am already operating in this industry.
All right, Jeremy.
As far as qualifications, I understand.
Let's get focused back on, I appreciate your, your comment.
Okay.
But I want to move, move the proceedings along.
Okay.
Scott, did you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So now we have dealt with, uh, two of the, two of the issues points. Add potential points for location and business plan. And so the next one would be neighborhood compatibility. And I thought I heard Councilmember Thomas said that he knew there were some points. Yes, please. If you, Dennis, I appreciate you taking the lead.
Well, from, from my perspective, and like I said, we didn't, we, we literally did not talk about this back there. So I need to share with you and my council members at the same time. The, um, um, there are, while you didn't very clearly specify the, the proximity of your location in great detail to others, you, you, you did state it. I think that location is, is, uh, you know, we have local knowledge and then we have somebody reviewing your application for accuracy and, and completeness. And without local knowledge, I would look at your application and go, huh, you know, that's not very clear. What does that mean? And, you know, you, um, uh, there is a, there's actually a, um, a gas station right across the street that sells alcohol that I think was missing also in there. But, um, so for me, local knowledge, I can, I, I see room, room for you to have an opportunity to gain some points here as having local knowledge and understanding what you said, while you may not have said it as clear as, as. as having local knowledge and understanding what you said, while you may not have said it as clear as, as, as some others would have seen it. And so, you know, I think your, your location is, is a good location for this, as opposed to how your score reflects it. So, I think that there are points to be earned there.
Councilmember Thomas, I want to make sure you're not confusing location and neighborhood compatibility.
I am. Now that you mention it.
Because the comments you just made.
Are directly to.
Location.
Location.
Yes, I am, actually. So, wow, where do I go with that? Sorry. No, I, I appreciate the, the.
We took a deep breath.
I, I, I appreciate that, because there was, somebody else talk for a second. I'm going to, I'm going to circle back around my thoughts here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Goose to go.
Sorry about that.
Can we have just a little background again on the neighborhood compatibility, what, what, you know, what's part of that? Because I think, I, I did, I do think there may be some points here, but I just want to make sure I'm not going the wrong direction.
Doing what I did. Thanks. Go ahead.
Neighborhood compatibility, and I'm going to go to the, if I can find my copy of the appendix A, deals with issues of outreach to the neighbors, odor control, if you have it there, Cleve?
I was just trying to find it. Got my pages mixed up here now.
It's, it's separate from location in terms of, it doesn't, it doesn't involve sensitive uses, or those kinds of things. But it's more, how are you going to get along with your neighbors, and are you going to be compatible with them? Are you going to be totally incompatible? Your use is going to be something that will cause a nuisance in the neighborhood, those types of things.
Okay, here we go.
If I could interject.
Yeah.
It involves, as the city attorney said, nuisance mitigation, outreach to neighbors. What's your proactive approach to introducing yourself to the neighborhood, maintenance of the property, any disposal of waste product, how that will be handled, and I think that's it. Those components, those are the components of neighborhood compatibility.
Thank you. Cleve, did you find the exact wording?
It's in the guidelines, sir. Yeah, it'll be the neighborhood compatibility plan. The application should include the following in the neighborhood compatibility plan. How the CCB, including exterior areas and surrounding public areas, will be managed so as to avoid becoming a nuisance, or having impacts on its neighbors and the surrounding community. Site plan for each potential location, the site plan must be accurate, dimensioned, and to scale, so.
Do we have a specific, oh, we probably do, the specific reasons why they had scored low on this particular one?
I don't think they were.
I'm thinking there wasn't a lot of detail given, that they could have done a better job of this.
Maybe attachment E?
In the original, they did. Here we go, in attachment D, they don't there.
So.
In, in the actual, I'm sorry.
No, no.
In the actual appeal, HDL did not address that. In the, in the initial review that HDL did, if you look at that, there are no points of concern under neighborhood compatibility for.
For Reserve House.
For Reserve House, correct.
I wanted to, I know that it's, John said, location, you know, compat, neighborhood, but I, I agree with Dennis, that I, I kind of think that location is a major issue, and I, I, I don't think they were given enough points on their neighborhood compatibility, especially in.
Wait, on location, or on neighborhood compatibility?
On neighborhood, on both, on both. I think that they should have been rated higher. And I'm, I'm knowing that they are in conjunction with another business that's been in operation there for quite some time, and I think that that might be an issue, too, that they have, it hasn't presented any problems. I know it's, it's a bit different, but it's still, it was them doing business as.
On location, they received a hundred and seventy-six out of two hundred possible. So.
Pretty high.
Twenty, twenty-four points potentially there.
Yeah. Yes. So, if you were to, if we were to, thank you, John, if we were to give them, say, ten points for location, it would put them, I would put them at the top. I would put them very close to the top.
There'd be just one other one that had scored higher than.
Yeah, there's a couple of one-eighties in there. How about five points for location?
Yeah, and, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, and I also think they should have scored higher on neighborhood compatibility.
Okay, and on neighborhood compatibility, they received two hundred and ten points out of three hundred possible.
Correct.
It's one of those situations where if we look at the neighborhood, and the uses that are currently there, and some of the issues that have gone on in, in that area over the last ten years, shall we say? Couple of different property owners and what have you, some things have come and gone. If they were to start all over, and were to add ten pages to their neighborhood compatibility report, just looking at the building and how it could be compatible with what's going on around it, it seems like it should score pretty high.
Well, that's, I was driving by, and I was observing all the buildings that are there, and I cannot see that this would be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Let, let me just, if I can, add a little bit. I think, again, that gets back to location, more than neighborhood compatibility. What we saw in some of the other applications, and what I felt we were looking for is, what kind of outreach would they do to their neighbors to find out who they are, what they are, and how would they, for example, do they have someone, someone who would be identified to respond to neighbors if there was a complaint? How do they, how would that outreach, et cetera?
So, they didn't make that clear.
I didn't see that in their, in their application. So, again, not that they don't have it, and, and I'm not trying to say, don't give them more points in neighborhood compatibility. I just want to clarify the difference between location, which is what I hear more, you're talking about, than neighborhood compatibility. Not that you've got bad neighbors, but how would you work with those neighbors if there were problems, and et cetera.
And this was, this would include outreach on the front end as well, so that they, people that went out to talk to their neighbors. We could potentially be your new neighbor, let's, you know, do you have any concerns, type thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Scott, Jeremy, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir. As an existing business for five years, all of my neighbors already have my cellphone number. We already talk on a regular. I get all my dog food and my propane at Clifton Warren. I eat at Tom's Far Too Often. I rent things at United Rentals last week. I, my, on the other side, Probuilder Supply, he's a good friend, and everyone in that whole neighborhood were already had it existing, so perhaps I was remiss in not putting more of that information in, but I, I have had no problems there in five years, and I have good relations with my neighbors.
If you were to go back and, and look at making this more robust, you could see, with the city's concerns.
I was just going off what the appendix was, so, you know, that, what we have now in the hindsight, yeah, we would have definitely made sure you were well aware, that each one of those neighbors would say good things about me already.
Okay. Patty has a question.
And I, I don't think it's so much on a personal issue, it's what, it's the product that you're going to be producing, and you're not doing that now.
No, absolutely not.
So, that's, you know.
We do deal with people that are.
Would that change your neighbor's opinion?
We already deal with, we already deal with people who are growing their own recreational cannabis, as it stands now, or medical, and have been since day one, and everyone's very clear on that, and I provide advice and information in those areas, because they all have interest in it, too, as to their own personal use, they might have.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we, I'm just going to read this out loud.
Go ahead.
The applicant should include the following in the neighborhood compatibility plan. How this CCB, including its exterior areas and surrounding public areas, will be managed so as to avoid becoming a nuisance, or having impact on the neighbors and the surrounding community. A site plan for each potential location, the site plan must be accurate, dimensional, dimensioned, and to scale, minimum a quarter inch scale. That, that is the, that is all that is requested of this.
Correct.
Here.
Also, in our application, we actually submitted that, as neighborhood compatibility, we will have twenty-four hour security, which will help everybody. I mean, there'll be onsite guard twenty-four hours a day. Also, we said that our signage would be discreet. We would not have cannabis leaves or anything on our signs. We also tackled odor mitigation as well, in our application. So, we feel as though we, we, we hit every point that the appendix was asking for.
All right. Thank you, thank you both. All right. Neighborhood compatibility, before we leave that, is there a place where we could, are we interested in adding any additional points?
I think we can add some points here.
I think we can.
You know, and it was three hundred's the, the top end, right? I mean, I, I feel comfortable adding an additional forty points to that, to the compatibility.
So, let's see, that would take them from two-ten to two-fifty.
Sorry, did you do something on location? Did you say five points?
I had suggested additional five.
Mark suggested five.
Was that?
I'm, I'm thinking that actually might need to be ten.
Ten?
Mm-hmm.
I had ten question mark.
Okay.
All right, so I'd be.
Clearly, I was in favor of it.
I think Dennis was, so if we were to add ten points to location, which, again, I think we all agree that it's a challenging site that needs some love. How can you hurt it? You can only make it better.
Well, I'm comparing it to other sites.
I think it's a good site, yeah.
I, I think it's a great site.
It's a good time to turn that corner around. Okay, so we've added ten for location. Mr. Saragosa has suggested forty for neighborhood compatibility. We have looked at business plan and has suggested that we add no points there. That brings us on to the next one, which would be air quality. Does anybody have, or Cleve, do you have anything to?
They received seventy out of one hundred for air quality.
Mr. Microphone, please, John.
Sorry. They received seventy out of one hundred for air quality.
All right, thank you. That's very good to do it like that. We should have started that way before.
So.
Sorry you have to sit through the first appeal. Just a second. All right, air quality. Now, I think we've heard and seen some pretty detailed system analysis that were, again, hindsight, the, a lot of the applicants included manufacturers and product information, and all kinds of specifications as to what, excuse me, those particular systems were going to do as far as moving air, and cleaning air, et cetera, et cetera. Here, where were those? If I'd have just called my HVAC contractor and had him send cut sheets over for the big three-phase air conditioning unit that he wants to land with a helicopter. What's the thoughts of the council on the ability to add points? John?
Would it assist the council if I read the air quality?
Yes, sir.
Description out of the appendix?
Yes.
Yes.
It's pretty simple. Air quality plan must demonstrate the air circulation does not impact the employee's health and welfare, nor the surrounding businesses.
And that's all.
That's it.
So, again, pretty general. And, comment?
As far as neighborhood compatibility, thank you for the extra forty, but an individual within two hundred foot of a elementary school got two seventy-six. All I asked for is equality on that scoring, which would actually have given us sixty-six points and not forty. And as far as air quality, once again, we're using that air quality plan in Sacramento, and none of the neighborhood areas have complained about anything. We have received not a single complaint, so.
And how long has that system been in place down there in Sac?
Well, we've had our cultivation license and have been cultivating for near, nearly a year.
Okay, so the complaints.
We've had, we've had no, no problems. It's actually a very good system. What you guys put in your ordinance is, is the best system that is available. Yes.
Do you have inspection on that? I mean, does the city?
Yes, we, we get inspected quite often.
How often do they come out to monitor that?
Quite a bit. It's been monthly. They, they inspect us on our fire sprinklers. We're also in build-out. So, you know, every time we have an inspector come, they pretty much inspect the entire building. We started with cultivation. The next license that we acquired was the distribution license, and we're finishing our licensing right now in our retail delivery. So, we have inspectors sometimes come out four times in a month, and we've received no problems whatsoever. And once again, that's a large cultivation system. It's a hundred and sixty-eight lights. That's, that's three thousand, that's like eight thousand square feet of plants, and we've had no problems.
So, Cleve, are we, is that going to be part of our future, that we're going to have those inspections or call for, or?
There, there are audits and inspections that are part of our process, yeah.
Typically, in Sacramento, it has been more or less the neighboring individuals who would come and complain. And once again, we've had no problems whatsoever. And we're also joined by Ace Plumbing, and, you know, so we're right next door to them, and they've had no, absolutely no problems with us whatsoever. Using the exact same system, yes.
All right, thank you.
And, you have anything?
On neighborhood compatibility, I appreciate the forty points. That's amazing, I thank you. But that would still put us in ninth position, and real world shows that we might have a better neighborhood compatibility with five years of being there and knowing my neighbors all firsthand, than ninth position, perhaps. There's more points there available. Thank you.
Maybe they should let us get through this, make one more.
Okay, points well taken.
Can I, can I just add one more time? It's not whether it is compatible in terms of neighborhood, but how did they show that in their application?
Right, and that, that was the.
All right. Air quality.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just chime in a little bit, too, because this has now come up a couple of times, the reference to the school in proximity to one of the other locations, that may very well be true. I came up under the discussion of location, and why, you know, the applicant would, or appellate would like to be moved up to the score that that entity got. I see it as two different things. What they're looking at right now is what's contained in your application.
Right, and that's where we're having a problem.
And that's what you have to deal with. The fact that they may be within a prohibited area in terms of distance from a school and sensitive use, is something that will be sorted out later, and I don't think HDL, in doing the scoring, factored that into their determination, because it shouldn't have been. They were just looking at the application. Whether or not that particular applicant, who's within that sensitive area distance, gets a CUP, a conditional use permit, or a variance, or whatever, that's to be determined later, and HDL was not looking at that issue, and, nor should you at this time.
But we can.
Thank you.
Not at this time.
No, uh-uh. Strictly the application process right now.
Once again, in our application, we actually, we, we gave all the criteria for the appendix, for neighborhood compatibility. So, we actually did submit neighborhood compatibility. Everything that was asked, we actually did submit it, yes. It's not as though it was lacking. It was there.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we, Mark?
Thank you. We are on air quality, and we have heard from the appellate that it's had success with a significant grow in Sacramento with no neighborhood complaints. The same system is proposed for his operation on Placerville Drive. What is the thoughts of the council?
You mean as point-wise?
Yeah, and as, as John is doing a great job now, he's rolling this out, there were seventy points awarded out of a possible one hundred. And it looks like the highest scores were ninety on any of the applicants that we received.
Well, I, I, I think, interestingly, their air quality plan was probably more detailed in the neighborhood compatibility area, when it came to the odor emissions. in the neighborhood compatibility area when it came to the odor emissions. And then from their, their testimony today, because in the actual plan, it's pretty light. But I'd be willing to entertain a five to 10-point increase on the, the air quality plan based upon what was in the neighborhood compatibility as it pertained to odors and their ability to, to mitigate that, as well as the testimony here today about their operation and what they would have installed, or what they have installed in Sacramento.
Well, they also state in their air quality plan that they're currently using systems in Sacramento and that they've been proven effective.
That's it?
Well, no, that's in the appeal. That's not in their application.
It's not in their application.
It is actually in their application.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just a, yeah.
It's just a blurb, but it's not much.
And they talk about each room being installed with negative air movement system.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how much more information you need.
Sorry.
Don't fight over things down there now.
Yeah. This, when I, when I think of a plan, I don't think of one paragraph. I think of a, of a plan that is, addresses all, all the factors. I mean, if you think back, I'm not going to go there. Yeah, you, you touch on elements in here, but it's, the air quality, let's see. It says air quality plan. This is not a plan. This is a, this is a brief statement of what a plan would look like.
Opening statement.
Yeah. Opening plan. So, I'm struggling with this one, too. What you say you do and what you put on paper are, they're two different things, and I, and I'm struggling with that, so.
Let me ask this, while you struggle, and I'm, you're doing fine. Let me ask the city attorney or city manager a question. If, if this was to move forward to phase three, would there be, when it gets reviewed again, will these issues that we're addressing be in some way noted so that the next reviewing group will, will be looking? Can they bring additional information in under which this next set of interviews?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And then they had, they had, the interviewers had that information in terms of how they were scored and what they got, so.
So there'd be a, so the actual council action then would probably look like the council deliberated and had added additional points for, at these levels, and then with probably some thinking, like, for example, on this one, that the, the applicant provide greater detail and the information of the Sacramento system that's being referred to, that's been successfully operated for a year.
Exactly.
So that if they don't bring that additional information forward...
Then they won't score.
Then they're not going to score. So it kind of gives them a chance to make up for that in hindsight. Darn, I know my guy would have had those pages if I could just ask him type thing.
Does, does every applicant have that opportunity?
Every applicant would have the same opportunities to embellish or add to their proposal or their application in terms of what they plan to do.
And they're all going to be aware of that.
Some of them may not be questioned on it as much, though, because their application may have had more information to begin with.
I just want to make sure that our deliberation is memorialized, so that as it goes to that next interview phase, that these are the things that those folks are going to be checking off and looking for that additional robust report. All right? So, is there some thought that, that might make it, there's a, I'll put it like, there's a condition as this was to move forward that this system that's being referred to, and I'm sure it's working great, will be there for the next set of reviewers to see?
Yeah.
That might allow us to give a few more points. Thoughts on that?
Discretion?
Oh, thanks, John.
At the time of the submittal, we weren't, we weren't quite sure that that was going to be a good system. In Sacramento, they do trial and error with us to where the inspectors come, they say this isn't sufficient, and they tell us that they want us to beef it up, or, or, they've actually worked with us the entire way through, especially, I mean, such as our air sprink, I mean, our water sprinklers for our fire prevention. So, at the time of the submittal, we were already actively, actively using it for four to six months. But four to six months isn't exactly something where you can say, oh, yeah, we knocked it out of the park. After a full year, we feel better, especially, you know, after a dozen inspectors have came by. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Scott, did you have anything to add to that one? All right. Thank you, sir. Oh, it sounds like cork when you do that. All right.
Okay, so...
In, knowing that this will be looked at going forward, would, how do you feel like maybe adding 10 points here?
Yeah, I, I would say 10 points in, on this category. Add an additional 10.
All right. Thoughts, council in concurrence with that? All right. Safety plan. And Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, sir.
The safety plan, how many, had how many points available?
They received 105 out of 150.
105 out of a potential 150 points. Safety plans are pretty huge, as we all know. Important to everybody. And we might as well, what was the request for the actual safety plan? What did we request?
Excuse me. It's a paragraph. I can read it to the council.
Certainly. I think it's important.
Safety plan. The application should include the following for each proposed location. A detailed safety plan. This plan should describe the fire prevention, suppression, HVAC, and alarm systems the facility will have in place. It should also include an assessment of the facility's fire safety by a qualified fire prevention and suppression consultant. An appropriate plan will have considered all possible fire, hazardous materials, and inhalation issues, threats, and will have both written and physical mechanisms in place to deal with each specific situation.
Can I note in there that the, the sentence, it should include an assessment of the facility's fire safety by a qualified fire prevention and suppression consultant? That's, that's one sentence that's highlighted. So, there, it's critical. But the point I want to make is, that was what they had. They did have that in there, but not a lot besides that, it appeared.
Hence my prior question. It, it appears to me that, yes, they did have a licensed contractor.
True.
And was there, should more emphasis been put on his shoulders to give a more detailed plan than, and, and these folks relied on, in other words, they hired him to do this portion?
Right.
And did he not, you know, do what, what was requested?
Right.
And maybe this fellow at the microphone can answer that, hasn't it?
Yes, sir.
So, in bold, it said qualified. If you'll see TMG Placerville and Trinkle Meadows, they scored 20 points higher than we did with, and they didn't even follow the directions of the appendix. Once again, like I said earlier, I'm looking for equality here. If they didn't even listen to the appendix and didn't even follow the, the directions, I don't see how they could possibly outscore us. We can't take their points away, but we could, you know, make our points equal with theirs. It's not an extensive safety plan, and I actually questioned him on this, and he said this is, this is, this is norm. I am not a fire, you know, I'm not a fire consultant licensed by the state of California. He is. So, we went with what, with what he, you know, was given, so.
Thank you.
And I would add that we went ahead and put most of their safety concerns onto a blueprint-sized page, so it was easier for the reviewer to see, and that's where we addressed most of those safety concerns that you mentioned, as opposed to where Brian mostly focused on the fire safety issues, right, with his letter? But we felt like we needed more, so that's why we did the whole page called the safety plan that showed where people would be, and fire extinguishers, and evacuation routes, and everything that we could think of that would be an issue for safety. And I felt like the air quality plan with separate HVAC units helped protect us from inhalation hazards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, this, again, this is on the safety plan. This is not on the security plan.
Correct.
We're in our...
I think they should have gotten more points.
Just so you know, what we're doing up here is reviewing the, the data that you submitted 13 different ways. Then the, I'll just fill in a little dead air for George. 138 points appears to be the highest score in this particular category. And Reserve House received 105 points, as Mr. Driscoll had pointed out. The low score apparently is 75. Let me ask John or Cleve a question while the council deliberates. The, the HDL response goes on into the security plan, but the security plan isn't a part of the appeal. Am I, okay, very good.
What did you just say?
I was just confirming that while the HDL does go on to address, there were concerns about the security plan, but the security plan is not a part of the appeal, of the appeal. It's just the five topics: location, business plan, neighborhood compatibility, air quality, and safety plan.
Mayor, if I can respond to that?
Sure.
The reason for that, that, that appeal response was the appeal that they provided in writing to me. It's different than what you have in this presentation today. And so that is in response to their appeal to me. And at that time, we did award them additional points in, in my appeal, in the appeal to me. And I don't know for sure, but perhaps that's why they didn't bring that up in the, in their, in their appeal to you.
Okay.
So, again, that HDL report is a response to their appeal to me at that level, not this appeal here. That's, that's why security is addressed in there, but, but they didn't appeal it here, so.
Thank you, Cleve. That does help clarify it. Thoughts, thoughts from the council?
I definitely think that they met the criteria, and I think that they should be awarded more points. I don't know, I'm, I'm going to say 20, but...
Okay. Well, thank you, Patty.
Had there not been a licensed contractor involved, I would have maybe thought differently, but, you know, I think they did due diligence in hiring someone and gave them advice, and I think they...
To go back and ask for more advice. And we do have the submittal up here of the actual safety plan, right? And this, you've got it right there in front of you. Again, one page.
There is also additional information on the safety plan at 146, I believe. It's combined with safety and security.
Security.
Was that the gray area it refers to? What was the page? I believe it's 146. Gotcha.
Okay. So there is a quarter, a quarter inch scale plan that shows all that? Yes, Jeremy?
As far as, we only submitted five sections. We used Crime Alert for our security plan, and we, they do over, they do a few hundred cannabis facilities in Northern California. They did our location in Sacramento. And we didn't receive very high scores, and they were, you know, once again, a qualified security company that does a few hundred facilities. San Francisco, San Francisco, Oakland, Redding, Sacramento. And we couldn't, whenever I spoke to Nora at Crime Alert and showed her our score, she said she had never seen an applicant get torn to pieces like that. And once again, this is a company that is already state compliant and working with hundreds of cannabis facilities. But we didn't, I didn't want to overwhelm you guys. I wanted to keep it simple. That's what my lawyer told me to do. He said pick certain points. So I did not actually ask for more points on security, because in the first appeal, we, we, we were turned down on points. But we, we actually met the criteria as far as what the appendix asked for, and used the leader of cannabis security. Crime Alert is the largest of Northern California. The normal security companies, they won't work with us because of the nature of our business. There's only two in Sacramento that will actually work with us. We chose the best. We chose the number one largest. And we were torn to pieces on that during HDL review. And we, they were qualified, and we hired and paid for them to do that section also of our application. I know this doesn't help us today, but just to let you know, we, we, we did everything we could to hire the qualified individuals.
And they're the, the firm that's currently providing security for your other site?
Yes, sir. According to Crime Alert, the security systems that they install for our cannabis companies are three times of what a bank would use. So, because you have to. Once again, it goes back to the cash. So, we, and once again, on our security plan that we submitted, we got torn to pieces. I appealed on that behalf, and we received no additional points.
All right.
We kind of gave up, because I didn't know what else I could do. They're the best, you know, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Patty, did you have a comment?
I have a, Jeremy, I have a question, please. When you gave your opening statements, you talked about the number of burglaries that have risen?
Yes. Over 21 in just dispensaries alone.
And so, so now, now you're telling us that these security companies do such a great job, and if they are doing such a great job, why are the burglar, number of burglaries increasing?
Well, to be honest with you, it's, it's, it's their efforts. One, one group of individuals, and it's, they're identified as a gang by the Sacramento police, they actually had the money to go out and buy $80,000 Jaws of Life. So they're able to get in really quickly, cut your safe in half, and take all the money out of it. And I just told you about the burglaries for dispensaries. The burglaries for cultivators is just as bad. Distribution licenses just as bad, because once again, we, we have to, you know, can't exactly walk around with that much cash.
Right. But that's kind of disconcerting to us as, you know...
I'm just telling you the facts.
Right. And so, that's what I was, you know, you were saying, that this company, and obviously, maybe some of the people that were robbed didn't have the same company you have. I don't know, the security company.
Well, the, the truth of the matter is, is you got one, you got, you have one guard that, on staff 24 hours a day. When six individuals with guns come at you, and they're organized, I mean, let's face it, cultivate, if you add distribution cultivation robberies, as well as the distrib, dispensary, we're talking almost 100. These guys are organized. It's not, they're not, they're not individuals to mess around with. They're professionals, which is scary. And that's something, once again, that, you know, that we have to deal with. Now, that's the, what I love about Placerville is I don't feel as though we're going to have to deal with the gangs, unless they feel like driving an hour out of their way. So I feel as though we'll be safer here. I'll be perfectly honest with you, whenever I'm in Sacramento and we leave in the evenings, we're scared to death. It's just a fact.
Well, I will tell you this, that we, we have had problems on Placerville Drive, because in proximity to the freeway, we went through a rash of a lot of burglaries and our, through our due diligence with our, our, our chief and everybody working on it. But it is, it's something to consider, because it's easy on, easy off, I'm told, with the freeway being in such close proximity. So, I think this is a big issue for you.
It is. That's why we have chosen to spend quite a bit of money on security as far as 24-hour on-staff, someone that is armed. Security is a big issue. Yes.
Cleve, was there any input from the chief on any of this?
No. He was, he was, he has not been involved in the review process. Now, Commander Wren is on the interview committee.
Right.
So they are at that point. If I could, I want to make one point. He mentioned the appeal to me. He did actually receive additional points in, in security area, went from 108 to 120. went from 108 to 120. I realize, may not be sufficient, but in security, we did give you additional points on my appeal process.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. I just want to point that out.
There's a lot of information there.
Yeah, I understand, no problem.
Thank you. All right.
Just so you know, I was assuming maybe that's why you did not appeal that to this level, is because you did receive those additional points. But I, but anyway, that's, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, thank you, Cleve. And it does clear, it is clearly displayed on the scorecard that the appellant has presented to us. They went from...
Eight to 20?
Yeah, from 108 to 120. The question would be, is the council interested in adding some additional points to safety? Councilmember Borelli has suggested increasing that score by 20 points.
Maybe that's too many. I'm open to...
Appreciate you throwing that out there.
I'm just comparing it with other submittals.
Mr. Driscoll, have you been keeping track of the number of points that the council has added at this point? Okay, and could you share that with us and the public? Please turn your microphone on.
You are at 60. In order to get to the next phase, the applicant needs another 15 points.
All right, thank you very much.
I don't know what all appropriate application will have considered all possible fire hazardous material and inhalation issues in a safety plan. And I don't, you know, while Brian Bunch gave you a rundown of what he might do, it doesn't seem like it addressed all these concerns that are in there. And to rely solely on his one-page consultation or recommendation as what he would do is a little challenging for me.
Once again, individuals that didn't even hire a qualified consultant got a 126. I, we did, we paid and hired, once again, a local, and we feel as though...
So the question, I would like you to address the question that we have to deal with. And that is, did you meet the, you know, not what other people did, I get that, but did you meet the requirements of the question that was given to you in terms of an appropriate plan will have considered all possible fire hazardous material and inhalation issues, threats that will have both written and physical mechanisms in place to deal with each specific situations? And are you, is it your, is it your suggestion that this page that Brian Bunch provided meets those qualifications?
I believe so, in accordance to what they, you know, with Sacramento, that was efficient.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
I would just add that the other blueprint size, those two things should go together. It's not just Brian, it was, we put it out on a blueprint, so it was easier to find, so that it didn't address perhaps every single thing and every eventuality that could happen, but it should have covered the bases from the beginning. Thank you.
So we don't have that blueprint that he's talking about?
It is a page one.
Is that the, oh, that's 146, okay. Which I can't, I can't.
It's in there.
I know it, but I can't see it. I need a magnifying glass.
Dennis has found it a couple of times. Phil, what's the thoughts? I see Mr. Saragosa taking his glasses off, taking a deep sigh, wiping his brow.
So, I'm having a really hard time getting to any more points on the safety plan. That being said, I went back through the neighborhood compatibility portion, and, you know, from my very short remembrance of what else I looked at 30 minutes ago, it was, I thought, you know, it was pretty on par with some of the other folks. You know, I'd be willing to go to, what is that, so 250, I'd be willing to go to 270 on neighborhood compatibility, so what is it at now?
That would give them 30 more than, because you did, we went with 40, right?
So 250, so 20, so I guess an additional 20 on neighborhood compatibility. So that would be a total of 60 on neighborhood compatibility, but I can't get there on safety. I think what they have is what they have.
Okay, so we had, we added 10 points for location, no additional points for business plan. You're now suggesting 60 additional points for neighborhood compatibility. We had 10 additional points for air quality, and you're suggesting no additional points for safety plan. Correct?
Correct, sorry.
And that brings us to a new total? Two?
That would give you 80 additional points on to their current score, which would put them at 1205, which is just over the 7, the 80 percent threshold.
So, is that a motion?
Yeah, I can make it into a motion then.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
That I'll move that we add these points, so that we would add 60 points under neighborhood compatibility, 10 for location, and 10 for air quality, bringing their score to 1205.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I still think they should have been given more for safety. I disagree with...
All right, but you do see that the points aren't there.
Right.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion, comments before, oh, you get to do a roll call vote, just a moment. All right, first of all, I'd like to, Dennis, any comments?
There's an appearance that we're just trying to get you over the threshold here to scoot you along. I, this is my time to talk.
Yeah.
And thank you for your comments.
But thank you, yeah.
There's an appearance that we're just trying to get you over the threshold here to, to, with points. And, and some of these I really struggled with getting the points, and some of them I felt very appropriately were given very appropriately. And I struggle with the neighborhood compatibility going from 40 and additional 20 points. My initial, and I need to address my additional, my original comments, because I was looking at your score for neighborhood compatibility as opposed to location, so I had those crossed up. So in my initial comments, I was looking at the disparity being much greater than I thought it was. And so that's part of where my thought process got mixed up at the beginning. And I want to clarify that, because that could be a point of contention at some point. And so I did make a mistake, and my apologies for that. And in going back at it, I want to make sure that there's, that there is not this perception of just getting you past that, because, because a lot of people put a lot of work into this and, and professionals that do this for a living and well-qualified people to evaluate these applications, and we're doing it on the, I wouldn't say on the fly, but we're doing our, the best we can with what we have to work with to deal with your appeal and the information, as well as the information you're giving us, which a lot of it wasn't in the application, which is very concerning to me. When I look at some of them, and when I look at your safety plan, the one page, when I look at your air quality plan, it's a paragraph, you know, some of those you just totally missed the mark, and some of them you totally, not totally, but some of them you, I see you having more opportunity to get points there. And so that's, I just wanted to put those comments out there and to discuss this just a little bit further, because I don't want this to be about getting you over the line, because that's not what this is about. This is about reviewing your application and having a meaningful conversation and appropriately applying the points.
I agree, Dennis, that it does give that up, but I think that where we're coming from, or at least where I'm coming from, is that there's a great deal of sincerity involved in this, and I do think that they messed up in some of their presentation. And it's, obviously, it's the first time and only time we've ever done anything like this, and we have to go on these scores. So I don't know of any other way than to do it that way. And I think they're, I think it'll all come out in the wash if these folks are, if we vote on it and they're given a chance to make the finals, you know, there'll be more scrutiny. And if they don't cut it, they're not going to make it. That's kind of where I'm coming from, is that, you know...
Does this require majority vote?
Yes, yeah.
Simple majority.
Simple majority.
Three.
Simple majority, yes.
That was super majority.
Right.
Good question.
Michael, any final thoughts? I'm going to make just a couple of comments before I call for the vote.
No, same, I mean, along Patty's questioning here, I mean, if we go forward here, that would make 11 applicants. We have three locations. You know, eight people are not going to get, potentially eight, will not have a location. So to Patty's point, there's going to be a lot more, you know, a lot more eyes, a lot more scrutiny, and Cleve will have a really hard job, you know, when it comes down to it, to get us to those three. But, so I feel good going forward here, knowing that there's still going to be plenty more review.
One more comment.
Thank you, Michael.
Dennis, go ahead. And I agree with what he's saying. I feel good after talking to you. I don't, after reviewing your plan, it's, you know, your words speak more volume than your, than some of this does, and I appreciate those comments coming forward. It's undone. Final comment.
Okay, turn your microphone off. No, we'll need that in a minute. First of all, very quickly, thank you for bringing this forward. It is, we did, we've all learned this process and created it this morning, in the last three or four hours. And I think the city staff and the council have learned some, gotten some valuable information. We were perfecting this as we were going, I might have been joking a little bit with their city attorney, but we actually, towards the end of this, that is exactly the process that we need to memorialize when we do this in the future, that we do stay focused on the issues that are being appealed, the potentials, you know, what was awarded, what the potential points were, et cetera. Those are all little things, but they will make the next one of these, because I'm sure there'll be another one, go much smoother and more professionally. So I appreciate you being a part of the learning curve this morning. I want to thank Tim from HDL. He and his firm have done an excellent job working with the city for well over a year now. We spent all of 2018 crafting the cannabis ordinance, and here we are in November of 19. We now potentially are going to have, you know, 11 more interviews to do as we work our way through this process in Phase 3. I agree with the sentiment of my colleagues that while it may have appeared that we were looking for points, the point system did have great value, I think, as we went through this. The fact that you came forward and allowed us to actually question you and dig in and find out your own concerns, and where you could see that you needed, you could have asked your contractors and what have you, your providers, to give you more info, that you would have simply done that. So again, part of that learning process, so thank you. The thing that I feel comfortable with is the fact that what we've done here this morning in consulting with all of us on the fly, is we know that we are sending a clear message to that next reviewing group, that these were areas that we have given you additional points, but there'll also be the information in there as to what our concerns are, and the expectation that you are really going to go, you know, double A game in Phase 3. And if you don't, then you'll be one of those unhappy eight people. So I think that makes me feel more comfortable with this, well, gosh, they need five more points. No, I think we've had a very clear conversation this morning, that this is a serious business. You've mentioned the crime factor that goes with it. We do not want that, so we do need to make sure that this is all double A moving forward. So with that, I'll thank you again for your time this morning, and I will ask Mr. Morse to call a roll. The motion was, as outlined by Vice Mayor Saragosa, to add 10 points for location, 60 points for neighborhood compatibility, and 10 points for air quality, on the items that were on the appeal. So with that...
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
And Councilmember Thomas.
No.
All right, the motion carries three to one, and it should be noted that it was Councilmember Borelli that made this, the second of the motion. All right, well, thank you very much. We will now adjourn for a few hours and be back for...
We'll see you in a little bit.
Mark II. Thank you very much.